So, well, if you have the plan, if you play a commissioner from the city council who the newspaper claimed took a bribe of $500,000.
Wow.
And so she says she didn't take the bribe and that the newspaper didn't, if they would have done their due diligence, they would have found out. So there's statutes that the case has to prove to say, hey, you did defamation, so here are the five elements you have to prove that case to show that someone did defamation, so.
Excellent. Having been a high school participant and then actually in college, I've found that that experience set me up more for what I actually do as an attorney than some of the mock trials they have you do in law school. Would you agree with that, Chris?
Absolutely. You know, I tell my clients sometimes that I've wanted to be an attorney since seventh grade, and they usually laugh and don't believe it, but I started mock trial in seventh grade, and that's when I started wanting to be an attorney, so it's a great experience, and it helped me out a lot. I still think I use a lot of that strategy when I break down a case.
And I think that the, having judged some of these competitions when I lived in the Twin Cities, the talent that they're going to run into in Duluth from the metro area is going to be shockingly strong, and it probably is in the region that they beat out to get up there, so the, this is a tremendous thing. I'm very impressed. It's, it's not easy. There are a lot of very talented kids that, like Chris, wanted to be a lawyer since they were 10 years old, and you would be shocked at that skill set, so that you're competing at that level after one year with all those underclassmen. I have a feeling we're going to be seeing you coming back again and again.
Let's hope so.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so no all business, a budget resolution. Joe?
And let me talk about that first of all, and then I'm going to ask a board member to actually introduce this, but every year that, just kind of as a protocol, we go ahead and we make a resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and the reasons therefore for the next school year. Now, as you know, the school district's currently in great shape financially. Our enrollment is steady, but you never know what's going to happen. I know the budget forecast at the state level is expected in a few days, and I'm actually cautiously, conservatively concerned about the future of the state budget and all the different programs that have been introduced, and the current governor has, initially, and there's a budget for education, by the way, if you look at it, I have a copy of it on my desk, it's 360 pages long, that's the proposed budget just for K-12 education, E-12 education, and, but he's proposing a 3% increase in the formula for the first year and a 2% the second year, but we really won't know until probably the last few days of the session what we're going to get, and so this really protects the school district, so in case we do have to make reductions, that we can do so in a timely fashion and give teachers the time to respond. So I would ask a board member to introduce this resolution.
Me, Dakers?
I can do it.
Okay.
So I would introduce the resolution and move for its adoption, the resolution directing administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore for the 2019-2020 school year, whereas the financial conditions of the school district should, could potentially dictate that the school board reduce expenditures, and whereas there could be potential for reduction in student enrollment, lack of sufficient funding, and an increase in costs, and whereas it could potentially be necessary for the district to determine which licensed staff members' contracts may be terminated and not renewed, and which licensed staff members may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting continuance of positions. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number 2752 as follows, and that just goes into that, so.
Second.
Cool. Okay, discussion?
So, isn't this something we should be doing anyway? I mean, your job description includes basically doing this, so why do we have to have a special resolution for you to do what you're already doing?
That's a good point. We've always done this, it's been kind of a tradition, the school boards are, but the School Board Association encourages us to actually go on record.
But the district is, is done by contracts and that as well, in which we have to, you know, we have to make things known, and we just can't let people go at will, and so we do need to reduce those positions by contract, so.
And this is the time of year too, Mike, that we start putting together what's called the plan, and so we take a look at current expenditures, current staffing, current enrollment, and then every year, we do put together a master plan that the board then approves before we go into any type of reductions or increases of staff, and so you're right, we do this every year anyway, but, but, yeah.
It has to be official by law, doesn't it?
It does.
Well, they encourage us to do this, I'm assuming, we've always, 24 years I've done this, we've always done this in, at all districts, and so it really allows, but I want, want the public to notice though too that, you know, we do run a very, very conservative budget here at the school, and that's why we're in such good shape financially, but, but you never know. I mean, the budget forecast for the state could come and show that we're going to be looking at a deficit at the state level, we may not get any increases of state aid next year, and so we need to be prepared to respond to that, and this really directs me to do this, but I would have done it, you're right, I would have done it anyway, and the board would have done it anyway.
Right.
Yep.
But it's good to just be transparent with the public and our staff, that, you know, that these are things that we always have to take into consideration.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Right, but, I mean, obviously, I'm a big proponent of running it tight and conservative and well documented and appropriate financial ship for the schools, which we have done, but this is, it could and potentially be necessary. This is telling, this is, this was literally a resolution that does nothing, and it feels like it's just symbolic to say we're always on the lookout, like you're doing a great job keeping your eye on the trends, but at the end, it says, we're directing you to consider the discontinuements of programs or positions. I don't want you to consider that unless you feel that that is something that needs to be considered, and so I would rather you tell us that I need to make some considerations here, give me the authority to do that. Is that what you're asking in this resolution? Because the idea that, that we're not doing that already implies through the language of this resolution, you're going out to seek to get rid of things even though we don't need to get rid of them.
No, if you know the history of our district, Mike, you know, I don't think you were here nine years ago when we did cut 1.5 million dollars, and we cut 40 positions, and then every year thereafter, we do pass this resolution so that we take a look one more time at really about where we are currently, what the legislature is doing for us or against us, and where we need to go in the future, and so.
I think, isn't it by law that we have to pass this resolution or something similarly worded in order to make the cuts? Because we have to pass it by a certain date. We're required to adopt a resolution each year that authorizes this to happen.
Well, we have to, the dates, the dates that are really important is that by contract, we have to, if we're going to let any certified staff go, we have to let them know in plenty of times so they have a chance to respond, and they can go to a hearing in front of the school board, and usually that's about a 60-day process, and so that's why it's so important to get this done in February. Like I said, the cabinet has been working on this all year long, and, and we are, in all honesty, Mike, we are looking at programs that, I think our staffing will be similar, I'm not so sure, the total exact personnel that we currently have in our system will be the same, and so we have some, for example, we, you know, we have some classes at the high school which are not being filled by huge numbers, and so we'll look at that to see whether or not we want to continue those positions, and, but that's why we do this work now. The second thing we do, the next big phase that we'll do at the high school, of course, is do pre-registration of classes, and so, because we do base our master schedule based on the student requests, and so we'll see what classes students sign up for, and if they, if we see some classes that they're not signing up for, then we have plenty of time to take a, a position, either reduce that person or reduce that person part-time. I just left a meeting this afternoon with my colleagues in the Southern Plains area, and this time of year too, we sit around, we talk, I know that some schools are looking for another ag teacher, some schools are looking for a business ed teacher, some people are looking for an English teacher, and so we start looking around to see, is there any possibility that we could share if we need to, and so that's what this is for, so it's not a, it's, it's not just, this resolution's an important resolution, and it's one that does set the tone for the rest of the school year. But thanks, your questions are good.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, yeah, we have a roll call on this one. Mike?
No.
Okay, Chair Watai?
Aye.
And?
Aye.
Lee and Mari?
Okay, motion passes four to one. Okay.
Good. Now, where are we?
Employment.
Okay, personnel. Murray?
Okay, part of the $50,000 grant proposed to the Schmeichel Foundation included $10,000 to use, be used to employ an artistic paraprofessional. The person would be hired to assist Kim Coppin with her elementary art classes during the second semester when she teaches students in K-2. Sherry Arts has been hired for that position. She will work no longer, no more than 69 days, and her salary will not exceed $10,000. I make a motion to approve the employment of Sherry Arts, part-time artistic paraprofessional for second semester effective January 22, 2019, at a salary of $125 a day.
Second. Michael? Questions? Discussion? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The Staff Welfare Committee met and discussed several options for replacing Jim Davison, the three-E-six principal, for the upcoming school year. The committee approved having two full-time principals serving through E-six co-principals. The committee further approved naming Andy Tredo to serve as one of the co-principals along with the current principal, Michelle Rosen. Andy has 16 years of experience in school, as a school employee, serving as an elementary education teacher for four years at JCC and six years in Fairmont, serving one year as the 712 Dean of Students at Fairmont High School, three years as the Fairmont High School Assistant Principal, two years in his current position as 7-8 vocational principal at Fairmont High School. I make a motion to approve the employment of Andy Tredo as co-principal at Fairmont Elementary School for the 2019-2020 school year effective July 1, 2019, at a salary defined in the 2019-20 principals contract.
Second.
Any questions? Discussion?
This opens up Andy's spot at the high school for the future school year, which will then open up for kind of a domino effect, right?
That's correct, Mike, and what we'll do, if the school board approves Andy's, the recommendation of the Staff Welfare Committee to assign Andy to be the elementary co-principal tonight, then tomorrow morning, we will post the position through EdPost looking for a co-principal at the high school, and that will be opened up to anybody internally and anybody externally, so we'll do a major recruiting for that replacement.
Do we?
Will be attractive, that'll be an attractive position, I would assume, in the field.
You know, a number of years ago, when we had openings, remember when Mrs. Mansky retired? That was eight years ago. We opened the position, we had nine applicants, six of them were absolutely unacceptable, many of them for legal reasons, seriously. Three of them, we brought in, and we hired two of them. Just like there is a severe shortage of teachers right now in Minnesota, there is more of a severe shortage of principals and superintendents, and that, so anyway, so my hope is that, but bottom line is, I think it is a very attractive position because of the, you know, financial security of the district and the nice community that we serve, and we have great kids, and we have great staff, but.
We're getting to the board.
Well, I was going to get to the board. We have a very supportive board. I mean, wonderful, probably the best board in the whole state. No, we really do have a really good board. Thank you very much for inviting me to that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
So, we're, the motion wants to approve Andy Tredo as an E-six co-principal, because Michelle Rosen is currently serving as an E-two principal, do we tonight therefore also need to approve her as an E-six principal, co-principal?
We don't have to do it tonight because it's not until the next.
Next school year, but, you know, that's a good point, because when we, we will start working on the principal's contract, and when we put that together, we'll put co-principals in that contract.
Okay.
Yeah, good, good question, though.
We should do that before the next school year starts, but I don't think you have to necessarily do it tonight because his position, he's not changing over until end of the school year.
That is correct, right.
And just to clarify, there'll be co-principals, and there'll be clearly defined job descriptions for each co-principal?
That is correct. If you can recall when Andy went to the high school as a 7-8 slash vocational principal, him and Mrs. Niff sat down, they put together a one-page sheet, these were Kim's responsibilities, these were Andy's responsibilities, and the middle column were Kim and Andy's responsibilities, and I've met with both Andy and Michelle, and Andy and Michelle have already started meeting to talk about next school year. I think this is going to be great for the faculty and great for our kids, because both of them are really, really good administrators, and I'm looking forward to having Andy come back to the elementary. Yep. But yes, the short answer is yes. They'll have very clear definitions about who reports to who and how.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Murray?
Following the resignation of Michelle Albright as elementary special education teacher, Michelle Rosen is recommending that Melissa Curry be hired for that position. Melissa is graduate of Mankato, or Minnesota State Mankato, and holds a master's degree in special education, learning disability and autism spectrum disorder. She's been employed as a special education teacher for the Truman Public School since 2007. I make a motion to approve the employment of Melissa Curry as an elementary special education teacher for the 2019-2020 school year effective June 30, 2019, as a salary of MA Step 13.
Second. Motion and second. Any questions? Discussion? All of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And that is the, that's the end of personnel. We, now we have board committee reports. Staff welfare. Julie?
Got notes here, someplace.
Julie, I think we just voted on everything that we did, didn't we?
I wanted to look at this.
Okay, you bet.
Yeah, we did do that, you're right. We did talk about secondary language arts teacher that we are looking at to take the place of Brooke Schultz, also the ELL teacher, and the special education teacher, yes, we approved that, and then also discussion was held on how we were going to manage the elementary principal retirement, so you're right, it was very much the same.
We did spend a couple hours though talking about the elementary principalship.
Oh, absolutely.
Right. We had four or five different options, and we had a lot of.
Kind of what are different options, where, where we were going with it, and, yeah.
Just to tell the board too, at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning, we do have a interview with a ELL potential teacher who is currently in Colorado, and she is in town, and she is relocating back to Fairmont.
Oh, really?
And so 8 o'clock tomorrow, we have an interview.
Okay. CER, Murray?
Well, we had, there was a lot of information at this meeting. Bradley Carlton came and kind of talked about the funding for CER and said it's majorly important with 2020 coming up, that if you see the census, if someone comes to your house, please take the census, we need to be, have everybody counted, so the funding, he kind of explained the funding per family, per household, so that was a big chunk of the meeting. Then they went in to talk about the different things that are happening. This summer, there's an all-women racing flight that is coming through that Ruth Seifer's talked about. They're at one of the landing sites, they either have to land or just hover over and get their number scanned. They're all women, all women that work on the crew, and they're come, I think they're starting in Florida, and they're going across the country, so that is the weekend of June 18th to the 21st.
And they're coming to Fairmont?
Yeah, so they're going to have some sort of reception.
What was the connection? How did we?
It's kind of like reg bright with airplanes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but somebody had to.
Well, they did bring up that, and I should have, the woman pilot, she sent.
Registers, they know a great bike ride across Iowa?
Totally lost.
Amelia Earhart.
Amelia Earhart sent a letter back to the Fairmont Municipal Airport for something. They supported her in some fashion, so that may be the connection why they're making Fairmont, and it also could be one of the stops where they need to either refuel or, yeah, so anyway, there, Ruth was going to talk with women of today and see if they'd be a part of having a reception, and.
That's really neat.
Yeah, I was very excited for it. They're also going to have the triathlon that happens this summer. They're also going to have a children's run, triathlon, the night before. Usually, they have it right before the race, and they thought it would be better handled with a separate group and having it the day before, and I'm sure we'll have lots of news coming back. The family dentistry, the kids are coming, or they can make appointments on, for March 5th and 6th, from 8:30 to 5:00, if they need any, it's a number of dental companies that are coming in to do that for free, so.
Into the school?
I believe so, yep.
Okay. March 5th and 6th?
Yes.
And they make that appointment through CER?
You know what, it says children's dental services, and the number is 6124, or 746-1530, and they have tear-off things for, at the, at CER, at the office, or you can get the number from there.
Something on that, I think that they call a central, like, scheduling, I mean, I think you call this, like, someplace in the state, and then they will, you know, for every.
So if you have questions, you can call CER, and they can direct you where you need to go.
Yeah, but I mean, I think that's where the scheduling comes from, but.
Okay, thank you, Murray, and?
Motion to adjourn.
Are we done then?
No.
Did you want to talk? Yep.
Yes. This is very important. I met with the Science Department today as part of the Curriculum Committee. This stack right here are the proposed standards for, that they're proposing to be this law for what's taught for science, and there's a lot of them, and it's open for public comment until Thursday, the 28th, and I encourage anyone in the community that has an interest in science to go through and look at these standards, to comment. It's not much time, the Science Department, the window's been open, will have been open for two weeks total, which is not a lot of time for anybody to look through and totally digest this, but just if you, if you have an interest in science, look through it. If you know of someone in the district who is involved in science, talk to them about what they think, and please make your opinions known. The state needs to hear from us.
And Nicole, to find that, they would go to the Minnesota Department of Education website?
Yep, go to the Minnesota Department of Education website, and if you have trouble navigating that system, you can email Judy at the main office, and she will forward a link to it for you. Thank you, Judy.
Quick, quick, quick question?
Yes.
That is a very difficult document to navigate online.
It's difficult on paper, too.
So, are there any hot topics that?
Yes, there.
People could look for?
Well, there, there are, there's, there are more standards than what there are now. They are proposing moving physical science to ninth grade, and then, I'm sorry, to eighth grade, it's currently at ninth grade, moving it to eighth grade, moving Earth Systems to sixth grade, having that the high school required biology, required physics or chemistry, and then one more year of a required science course. They're also, the standards entail a lot of Earth Systems content, which is supposed to, I guess, be taught through the other classes perhaps, or as a separate class if the district determines it, so there are, there is a major shift in, in what they're doing, and it's a lot to go through and digest, but if you have, like I said, if you, if you have time and can look, and it's, it's broken up by grade levels, so you can look at particular grade levels to see what it is. It's more, it's a shift away from, which is, this is probably a good shift, more focusing on the scientific theory, discovery and all that, as opposed to knowing, for example, what the specific rocks are in Earth Systems, so it's, it is a shift in the way that science is taught. It's also a lot of, it's, it's a big increase in the standards that they're expecting to be taught, so.
And currently, physical science is ninth grade.
Correct.
And Earth Science is eighth grade.
Eighth grade, yes.
So then what would, what would take, what science would take place in ninth grade? Is there a recommendation for that? So then what would, what would take, what science would take place in ninth grade? Is there a recommendation for that?
The only requirement is that there be one year of biology, one year of physics or chemistry, and one year of another course. That now there are a lot of our systems requirements and standards. And so the question is, do we need to require an earth systems course at the high school? That's something to be considered. It's not required right now by the state. And there's a lot of questions.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Nicole.
My kids have a motion, motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Murray?
All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five thirty-eight.
You didn't make it by 5:30.
Did you get a sense that he was anxious?
He wants to go to the basketball game.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.